Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to our meeting, Town Council Meeting. This is the S- Smacks. Of the council meeting. And we will follow the agenda that's given. First of the prayer. You have a question here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in my pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Brown. Pastor Carson Brown, would you give the pledge?
I sure will.
And then what?
Yeah.
He stays.
Let us pray. Most gracious and everlasting Father, once again we come and the word said in all things we ought to give you thanks. So we thank you for this day, God, this day that you've allowed us to see, protect us day and night. Now, Father God, as we come to this meeting, God, we invite you in, for if you're not in this meeting, it will never go well. Lead, guide, and direct us that this council may lead, guide, and direct this community, this town. Father God, I call for unity tonight. I hope for us to come together as one, as on the day of Pentecost, when they're all were in one place on point of color. Come now, Holy Spirit. I bind anything that is not of God in this meeting on tonight, and I cast it out right now in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
The pledge of allegiance, good for the land, under the banner of "Praise to the Lord."
To the Republic, for which we stand, our nation, for God, and for the people.
So this is the civility pledge. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community advocating for civil engagement and respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for betterment for my town.
Thank you. All in all, everyone says yes, except Pastor Person. Catcher? We will look at item five for approving of the June agenda. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Probably move the second that we approve our June agenda. If there is a petition, do we listen? Hearing that, all in big say aye.
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 Pause this, a seven. Item six. Approve approval of the previous meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Sir, I would like to make a motion to do it in consent form so that we can approve them all at once, while we're just having those three summonings and discussing these.
Go ahead.
So I'll make it a motion that we approve these previous meeting minutes in consent form, so that we don't have to go through each one, one by one, and keep our, keep our audience here for three hours. That's my motion, sir.
Probably move that we keep our meeting approved in consent form March twenty seventh, twenty fourth through May twenty five to stand approved of the period for the US.
Yes, ma'am.
All in big say aye.
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 Any opposeds? A seven. Item seven. Approval of previous financial statements. Motion for approval.
Can we do it the same way with consent?
Yes.
Frank, why don't you go ahead?
I make a motion to approve the previous financial statements using consent form to approve the July twenty fourth through April twenty fifth financial statements. Sir.
Probably move the second that we approve the financial statements in consent from all in big say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? A seven. Item eight. On the bottom partner.
David, everyone.
David, the words.
David Mayer. Well, thank you for having me this evening. So first thing, I'd like to address the recent concerns of the state of both these. I've prepared a statement to you, to all the meeting members. To address the recent concerns, we want to make our committee aware that all of the fire departments recently identified a bin bug issue for your fire station number two, which forces on the fire station reform on Paulino. Upon the first signs of possible issue, we acted immediately to investigate the situation. We brought in an outside professional remediation company who was brought in to conduct a thorough inspection and initiate appropriate treatment plan. Due to the nature of the fire service, our personnel often come into contact with a wide range of hazards, bin bugs are just one of those hazards. It is our responsibility to, by mitigating that quickly and efficiently, so that we can return to normal operations to continue serving our community without interruption. To prioritize the health of one or sort of personnel, we have temporarily relocated all staff members from the affected stations. During these times, we will continue to respond to calls in these areas. We work closely with our automatic and mutual aid partners to maintain full emergency response coverage. So there has been no impact on service to our communities that we protect. And we're committed to resolving this matter as quickly and effectively as possible. Safety will be on our personal domain, our top priority, and we appreciate continued support and understanding of the community as we work through your decision. You know, we're open to any questions or concerns or, you know, stop by the station, you know, we're going to have a discussion with you in the process that we're open to, you know, very transparent this decision. You know, I know, I attempted to, to put this statement on on the top floor last night. There were some, you know, you gotta jump out in front of it. I do apologize. I didn't release the statement sooner, but we've been busy, you know, trying to mitigate the immediate stations and trying to, you know, I'm really just providing service that you guys. So with that being said, Station two, which is the station here in Aldo, it was treated yesterday. They even scheduled up the remediation company, and they, they want, they, they recommend each day be closed for two weeks. And we're not following the recommendations. It's the initial treatment and then they'll be a secondary three days, two weeks later. So right after that secondary three days, we can be back in our station for the twenty four hour. So the station, we call it, was treated on Saturday of this past week, so that station will be open probably within like seven to nine days, depending on, you know, as long as we can find anything, say after the stuff. It was totally the same out of the station here and on, don't want anybody to, that way, everything would, that isn't there, you know, so that we're not introducing anything. But just because our, our crews have relocated the station seven, which is long guaranteed group, doesn't mean we're not active in, in a huge civic service. We're still, we're still maintaining the law, we're still coming out, doing our free plan, we're still training in our district, so we're still there. Obviously, we need somewhere for my personnel to rest their heads, and that station seven, that's the closest most available station that we have said. Station six, off of, off of Sausage and Rose, we have relocated, we invest there, so that way we can keep ALS services close to the area, and that station really just set for two beds, so you know, there's no way we could fit our fire truck and EMS personnel in there, you know, it's just a very effective station, so we felt with that, because our ALS services close to you all, you were just right down the road. We've worked with our automatic and mutually aid departments, the agreements, so that way if there is structural fire from here north, we're, you know, we're, we're, there we go, they're in route already. So, you know, this day and age, ninety percent of our problem is, is natural coffee, because fire prevention, fire safety, human rate up, in your construction is, it's limiting, there's such a problem. Any, any questions? I'm open to, if you guys are okay with that. I feel some questions now, but if you're, if you're counsel, if you guys have any questions.
Hearing that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Boston County Sheriff Office. That can speak heard.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, and the citizens. I want to introduce myself. I'm Lieutenant Turner. With the Sheriff's Office, twenty eight years now, in June. And I've been appointed by the sheriff to be the community representative for Aldo, so you'll see the, most of these meetings. Passed out counsel my cards. If you have any questions, concerns, and always, like I said, the best thing to do is e-mail. My office phone, I'm not in the office, I'm a road lieutenant, so I'm out and about, and my jurisdiction right now is pretty much the whole county, so I don't have a lot of time spending in the office. Cell phone, sometimes when you get out of North Charleston, it's actually spotty, I think I have issues. Mayor and I try to get in touch with each other, go cell phone service. So we have that. We just go over for approximately the past month, I'll go over the highlights of responses in the Aldo area. Some of the big ones, Sheriff's Office responded to thirty five nine one one hangups. The big thing is called patrol logs, that's when we're driving around the neighborhood. Aldo had five hundred and fifty nine patrol logs. And a lot of times, that's one of the things we, we hear that we don't see anyway. But within the past month, different parts of Aldo, deputies logged five hundred and fifty nine areas within the, just Aldo. There were twenty three suspicious activities. Usually when somebody calls in, they see something down the street. Hundred ninety nine traffic stops. Only one, all for gunshots heard. We made four DUIMS. Eleven alarm calls, and that was, that was the biggest one, one assault and one burglary. Like I said, I'm here to relay information. You guys have any questions or concerns?
Any questions on behalf of the council? Hearing that, thank you, sir.
All right.
Shout out.
You spoke for good work?
Sir, he's doing a good job.
Yeah, thank you.
The good to all festival, Mr. William. Going to come far enough here, sir. You're going to take your stand.
Uh, the council, we agree. So this is a quick update on offense, it's going to be scheduled for June twenty eighth from eleven to six. We have acquired Page Top Grill, the VIP sponsor again, so everything is still tracking for that. It just needs town support and spreading the word, so June twenty eighth from six or eleven to six, and that's the biggest update I got.
Great.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do.
Probably comments? Mr. Mayor, Mr. Davis, and here's all the side in the power of the late and policies.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As a member of the board of zoning appeal, I want to address the eight foot bearings that were granted back in January. Which had upset some community members present at the hearing. While no council members were in attendance, those who polled voiced their opinions to you, resulting in ordinance blast month named that, adding additional criteria for boundaries which passed. However, the other ordinances that were on the agenda faced strong opposition, and they still passed. Councilman Prowse himself said that we should thank a member of our community for helping him craft the ordinances. So if you can solicit help from just one community member, imagine how much we can accomplish if we work together to listen to the whole community. You all have now set a precedent that you will listen to in favor of one group of residents over another. Just because a resident of our town didn't vote for you, if they don't agree with you, even if they're not present at the secret meeting to vote before the actual town hall meeting, doesn't mean their voices should be ignored. And Miss Watkins, as the town administrator, you should be the honest broker. Decisions shouldn't be made without all council members, the mayor especially being informed. It shouldn't matter who has the votes. As an elected member of this council, everyone sitting before me deserves the respect to know what decisions are being made and what information is being disseminated to the public. It is unacceptable when notification is sent out to your Discover Aldo app while I'm at work, and I ask Councilman McNeil, a member of this council, about it, and he's unaware of it. You stated in that quote, this hearing was literally strictly an error. I do sincerely apologize for the inconvenience this has caused both the petitioners and residents who have submitted their public comments, in quote. Why are you apologizing for doing what has customarily been done for the last thirty years? Or rather, are you apologizing to certain council members for not following their plan? As I gather my thoughts on Tuesday about what I want to say tonight, the agenda for the Ways and Means Committee meeting was released. I noticed that proposed budget that the position of the town administrator will receive a sixty six eighty percent increase in their salary from seventy seven thousand to one hundred and twenty eight thousand. I truly pray that you are not allowing yourself to be fought to push the dirty agenda of some members of this council in. You are getting yourself caught up in their web, and I can guarantee you, and everything that's banned, it may be their scapegoat. Thank you.
Mike. Be the man who's part of this. I want to speak on behalf of the many residents who have taken the time to participate in recent town surveys regarding ordinances twenty twenty five dash zero three, twenty twenty five dash zero five, and twenty twenty five dash zero seven. These surveys were intended to provide you, our elected representatives, with a clear sense of where the people of Aldo stand. Let's look at the numbers. For ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three, out of a hundred and thirty four participants, eighty six residents are voted, which is a clear majority. For ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero five, ninety seven residents responded, sixty seven were pulled. And for ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero seven, ninety people participated, fifty seven said no. In every case listed, the majority of our community voiced opposition. These were small margins, they were decisive. So the question we now must ask is, what is the purpose of these surveys of the council members? When people speak, especially in these numbers, and are ignored, it does more than show a lack of responsiveness, it damages trust. We are told our voices matter, but when our participation is met with indifference, it feels like we're being asked to go through the motions while decisions have already been made. This is not just about specific ordinances, this is about accountability. If the will of the people is repeatedly cast aside, we're no longer in a community guided by the people, we're in one who without them. Please, I urge the council to consider not only the numbers, but the message. The people of Aldo who have been here for years, great grandparents, grandparents, parents who worked very hard to maintain this town, and we're being ignored. We don't like it, and we ask that you listen, thank you. Joe Cohen. Good evening. I'd like to give a little history lesson because you got to know your past, understanding present. Back in the late eighties, a few citizens mostly living in near Cape Cod, Granny's Lane, Come About Way, and Lion House Road, started the incorporation process for the town of Aldo. A lot of you didn't know that. Started that early in the year. Only a few African Americans who are participating in those early meetings, while most were unaware of significant changes that were coming our way. And cooperating a town is a formidable task. It involves dealing with population movements, land use limits, service feasibility studies, boundary restrictions, and any other requirements that have to be met, just to get the process started. A lot of work was put into this, those residents out of the ballroom. Unfortunately, in nineteen eighty nine, Hurricane Hugo hit and devastated the Aldo area, especially the agricultural areas. Hugo forced the plans for the town to be relocated. The few African Americans who were privileged to be in those early meetings continued the process. The town sent it down to Porche School Road and Maxwell Roads. But here's a part that matters. Those original families who worked hard to formulate a town turned their backs to the town. Former Mayor Alston and town council tried several times to annex the Come About Way residence, but each time, our resounding response was no, no, thank you, no, we don't want it. He knew that building together would make Aldo stronger. At our last meeting, Mayor Green made a statement that was true, but viewed as critically incorrect. She stated, the residents of Come About Way had several opportunities to annex into the town prior to this present day, but chose not to because they didn't want to be under the leadership of a black, of a black mayor. Well, reception, perception is reality. She said that was what was obvious. They started the process of incorporation, but when the leadership roles changed, they no longer wanted to participate. Reminded a little petulant child on the playground. But they don't want to, they're waiting, want to take their ball and go home. I don't want that, right? I don't want to play anymore. In the meantime, this town struggled to keep the lights on this building. Residents personally funded the Blue Craft Festival to generate revenues for the town. We fought to provide a desperately needed water system. We didn't start the incorporation process, but we met the challenge of building the town. Now that the town of Aldo is no longer under the ducting, no longer a forgotten area, but blocked between the Francis Mary and the intercoastal, and a perception is reality. The reality is that same people that couldn't or wouldn't help sell the community, build the town, are now doing everything to be a part of the town. To that ask some question, why? Why now? Why the thirty years, the residents of Come About Way want to add to the town? When they emphatically said no to annexation? Not once, but twice. But again, I digress. I'm simply asking why out loud, I don't want you to pull well, that we are totally and honestly transparent. We know why. For sure we do. Mr. Alston?
Once again, good evening, council, Mayor Green. Answer the town. I'm gonna kind of speak like this, so. Mr. McNeil is calling, and Miss, Miss Blake, you did a phenomenal job on touching that. I do feel like it's very important to listen to the residents, to do these surveys or public order, or public speaking online. It's there for reading, right? So let's utilize it, let's listen to the town, because we don't work for y'all. You guys work for us. So we are the town, we're the community. Listen to us, love us. My grandfather back in August eighteen nineteen ninety two, when he became the mayor of this town. This was focused on love, unity, and hard work.
Right.
We need to stick to that. It's not that. Y'all know what a communist is?
I know what a communist is.
Essentially, you guys came to Aldo.
A communist.
Black and white, doesn't matter race. You guys came to Aldo to a community that was built on the backs of the current Mayor Green, uh, burnt Miss Cohen, and some other residents who have worked entirely too hard for not, for their voices not to be heard. And when I see things online, on the, on the, on the Aldo and Facebook page, the stars bashing and blaming prior councils and, and, and when I see some of the names on there, like Miss Helms and, and Miss, Miss, I'm losing name right now, Miss Cough, it's, it is creating more division. We don't have to get along, but we have to respect each other.
Alright.
We don't have to like, agree on everything that we do, but respect is key. And I understand we will not agree on everything, and that's okay. That is okay. That's what this is for. That's what the council's for. Agreements, disagreements, discussion, that's what it's for. I, I encourage you guys to have an open dialogue. I encourage somebody here to go meet somebody else, and I never met. Become together. We are Aldo. Welcome to Aldo. You know, so, and I'll leave it closing, like, like I said, my grandfather started this. And just understand, we not, we, we not leaving. Respect us, respect each other, and thanks for your time.
Yes, always. That, that, you, well, sir. You go to. I understand. Councilman Paul, who's down?
Thank you, Mayor. More than ten years ago, Charleston County established a borderline. It's called the urban growth boundary, that encompasses not pleasant North Charleston, James Island, and downtown. It's to limit denser development to those areas within the boundary. Aldo is outside this boundary and classified as a rural area with the intention to be preserved for conservation, agricultural uses, very low density housing, and little human development. In twenty twenty three, the town, in partnership with the COG and the steering committee, hosted public workshops and online surveys where they identified the number one concern by ninety one percent was urban sprawl, suburbanization, and overdevelopment. If you were here on May twentieth, you would have heard that the next one was eighty eight percent, and that had to do with preserving natural resources. As of the twenty twenty U.S. census, Aldo has a population of one thousand seven hundred and fifty five residents. Prior to me joining this body, town council approved development of more than seven hundred housing units. That's just a fact. I would estimate that our population is already higher with those new homes being occupied, some of those new homes being occupied. These have created real risks that we face. The smaller lot sizes are causing a real threat to our natural resources due to septic tanks being installed too close together and not being properly maintained, which is leading to failures. This has happened in my neighborhood. These failures ultimately pollute our environment, particularly our ground and well water, and having a negative impact on our public health. Therefore, to protect our rural areas and prevent Aldo from becoming an extension of not pleasant, this council has diligently been working to adopt comprehensive, a comprehensive plan and ordinances that protect this area and all of its citizens. I would like to address some of the statements that have been made in recent meetings. Ordinances are not being hastily passed. They require public hearings, usually with first and second readings. The lot entry ordinances were originally presented in March of twenty twenty four with supporting documents from the planning administrator. I tried to find the minutes and I couldn't locate them, but from my recollection, at that time, we did vote to defer and send it back to planning for more input from the community. Regarding Team Aldo having secret meetings or hidden agendas, if they are having secret meetings, my feelings are hurt, so I haven't been invited. I can only speak for myself. But these are a few of the concerns I publicly campaigned on and have supported since my tenure started. The first concern was slowing growth and protecting the integrity of our rural area. It is why we passed a moratorium in twenty twenty four and extended it this year. It's why we put a lot of focus and work into the comprehensive plan, which we did again tonight at six o'clock. In regard to passing annexation request, this is not contrary to the moratorium. The ordinance for the moratorium The ordinance for the moratorium was in regard to zoning requests, for example, changing from agricultural to residential and approval of subdivision flats. I cannot remember an instant where, an instance where a citizen was denied annexation who went through the appropriate legal procedures from joining our town since I had been on council. And I don't have any knowledge of what happened in the past, but from what I understand, the people who are annexing now are new residents. They weren't here thirty years ago. Another concern was updating technology to provide access and transparency. We've implemented a state staff-wide email system, something we didn't have before. We have installed equipment so that meetings can be recorded and or live streamed. I've been able to go back and re-watch meetings to make sure I didn't mishear something. As a side note, managing the website is not one of the responsibilities of council. It belongs to staff. From my understanding, the new website was directly copied from the old. The citizen who requested updates, we made those update within the next day after the request was made. Hopefully, this addresses those concerns of any disrespect that was not intended. Another concern was fiscal responsibility, viable budgets, and prudent financial planning. One thing I am proud of is getting our federal funds allocated to capital improvements to our town hall. We've replaced our roof, repaired our floor joists, and I hope to have our H, our HVAC installed before the heat of summer. Once these projects are complete, I look forward to working with staff to identifying any other areas that need attention. Now, to some of the personal attacks I have received, I am serving because I care about this town and its future. Being on council is hard work. It has been painfully slow and frustrating at times. And I will continue to be faithful to this position. I have been called in Julia Latta.
I'd like, I'd like to make a comment, but you don't want it. Where do you stand with the, um, study of? You know, I, I would like to have the executive session going on the agenda for maximum. Okay, um, the other thing, um, let's, let's back to some reports. And I spoke with our town administrator about this, but I just want to reiterate it here. Um, some more of the best reports so that we know what's going on, particularly in respect to um, the water department, the planning department, and housing. There's, there's a lot of stuff going on in these areas. They usually don't know anything about. And it would be extremely, um, helpful for us if we had the knowledge, obviously, by the way, um, monitoring reports. That's all.
Any other council persons' concerns? Here in that? We go to the mayor's report. Do not have some concern. And the past, and I feel like, well, I'm very clear with this question. In the past, we have annexation from anybody. Number one, in present. And there's not. There's standard that it's like. Number two. The maps would be more and given to us, not with, not with just a tax map. But the percentage that's documented. That's why I go to chat. And the other was that in the news. The law says that we can't use the way of water for annexation. So I want to get clarity from Matt. Please let people know. A lot of people have been following.
Yep, so, that makes sense. The mayor, I talked this week there a couple times, and she raised this issue that she votes in the past to try to annex it, and if there was marshland in between the two lots that didn't make them contiguous, that they were told they couldn't do that. And I said, well, eventually the law changes, but let me look, well, this, this is a state statute, it's, uh, section three, or excuse me, section five, I can read, I can read it by, which defines contiguous property. And it says, I'll read it and then kind of break it down. It says, for purposes of this chapter, contiguous means property which is adjacent to a municipality and shares a contiguous border. And so typically, you've got, you know, one lot is in the town, then a lot is in an incorporated county, and because they're next to each other, they can annex in. It says, con- uh, continuity is not established by a road, waterway, right-of-way easement, railroad track, marshland, or utility line which connects one property to another. So that's what the law was previously, they've added. However, if the connecting road, waterway, easement, railroad track, marshland, or utility lines intervenes between two properties, which but for the intervening connector would be adjacent and share a contiguous border, the intervening connector does not destroy continuity. So that's, that's the change is, if but for that marshland being there, there's a house that's in the town here, and there's some marsh in between them, and there's a house in unincorporated Charleston County, but for that marsh they can touch, you can annex it. So that's, that's the change.
So if there are areas could be annexed, because they were not denied. Ten mile long though, they tried, I mean, but they were denied. So I just.
There's probably two thousand of these factors.
The significance is so favorable for that. Okay, and also the high land there. They were denied as well. You got no information on this, nice that has. So you don't know. And it's coming from legal. It's not coming from Mayor Green or this test. Um, I attended several conferences, several graduations. It gives, I had one conference today with the urban land use. And it would move forward. It was exposed and rapidly. So I don't know if there is any limitation for what they could do, but they would move forward rapidly. And they got it all, don't you? And they, we might get on him. They come, so you just, that and that.
Who's coming back and the urban land and the troops coming to follow them? For what purpose?
We don't know yet. That's why I attended meetings. Yeah.
Didn't tell you?
Well, it's admirable, and just what, it's what y'all want, right?
Be huge, what, are they kind of coming here to do studies or?
Yes, they are studies, they, you know, they are all. You were part of that. Rapidly. So if you want to deny it, you know. That's right. That's right. But we have to do all the work. But I didn't do.
Thank you.
I didn't do. Graduation? Was a goal. We did a lot of graduation for this. Actually, I put on the table that I did some graduation for passing. I'm blacked down, but I still went. And I attended, and I was glad that, and I was called back to be. But you know one thing, God, you went seriously. The council people from Georgetown, Lexington, uh, Hollywood, Lincolnville. Guess what they do? They picked me up. I was picked up in a limousine. Very fast. I didn't drive the traverse at all. So I want you to know that somebody out there loved me. And they took care of me very well. And the students, hallway, uh, big city, uh, King Street. Did I mention COVID? Georgetown. Matter of fact, I had a red in Georgetown. Read my phone. Somebody ran, ran into me, but that didn't stop me. But just like somebody said, we're gonna be gonna get unionized. We're gonna be gonna unite and come together as one.
Amen, amen, sister.
I don't know. People looking like, look at me like I'm a fool now. Asking where, where, where is this coming from? Could we stand, could we stand up with all that's going around the world? Say that we are united?
No, no.
No, not very crisis.
Come on.
I wish, I wish, listen, listen to me now. That's right. You all come along if you want. But you have to understand where you're from. Okay? I entered Brandon McLaren's high school. And nine sixteen.
Please, please, don't stop. I came here, I came not here.
I just created. I went to college, college. Y'all know we have politics. For those. It's all my college. I had to break that too. So if I could stand up and do that, why can't I have a great sound? Come on, man. But, that's right. So that's prevented now. We are one. There's no coloring up there. So stop the mess. Stop the mess because people are dying of facts. Let's come together as one, yes. If we don't have the all festival, let's come together as one. Anything else we do that, come together as one. Because you don't know, no man know the day, not so the hour. They gonna be here. So we gotta give up. So what can you do? And I still don't wanna die, go to hell. Because I had all the hell down here. Don't wanna die. But that's it. Well? Ten pounds?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's unite. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
We go into the administrator's court.
Thank you, ma'am. An update on the town hall improvements. The flooring and the resource center is completed, so nobody is gonna fall through that floor. Um, the administrative assistant's office is also been redone. Um, they're doing one extra coat of standings that'll match the improvements that were previously done in that office, um, so that should be completed by the end of next week. Um, I submitted the engineer drawings. I haven't heard back. They got approved from Charleston County yet on the HVAC, um, so that we can have central heating and air. Um, but that is the last outstanding town hall project. Any questions?
Any questions on that?
There's another reminder that the all festival Saturday, June twenty-eighth, on Monday the sixth, um, at the Big Park over there. Um, and it's going to be a very mess. Uh, for an update on the employee handbook, so we made some changes to the employee handbook from the M R P group. And then I made additional changes. I just got heard back from Legal today. Um, so that'll be in a resolutionary, in a resolution format for council at the July. And then, um, I've been in contact with the South Carolina Office of Resiliency, SOR. They're doing a Santee River Basin, which we will be affected for a resiliency study. Uh, they have offered to do a resilience, the one-on-one training with council at a meeting, if you would like to have it. Um, if not, this is, I can obtain those resources and share them with council. But if you're interested in obtaining that training, um, please let me know and I can get that second.
What is that?
So they would go over what their project is, how you can build a resilient community.
Okay, resilient in terms of environment?
Yes.
Okay.
And, um, what resources that SOR has that they can share with the town.
Where would that, Dar?
It can occur here, or we can search for a larger venue as well, so we can look at the Cape Breton, um, National Life Refuge, or we can look at Berkeley. We would just have to make sure that we advertise it where it's going to be.
When would that turn?
Whatever, council. They haven't announced it yet. When, if council A would like to have it, and B, um, when would be the best?
It would just be asked for, is it?
As this forum of council would be open to the public as well. And then, um, one item that is not on here, the Center for Airs Property, we are going to be having a meeting on June twenty-fifth with them at Berkeley Electric at six o'clock. They were working on a flyer that should be coming out, and that'll be advertised, but that is open to everybody who would like to learn more about Airs Property, who like more information about what the center does, and if they need assistance.
Any more first, uh, questions or concerns? Thank you. Power to the water. Update. Have a smelly board, you know, just talking about.
Yes, ma'am, um, we are gathering reports of if your house smells like a rotten egg smell, we are logging it and trying to do controlled flushings in that area, and also updating our, um, flushing with our water operator. The chlorine analyzer just had installed today. What that means is that for twenty-four hours, we can monitor that on an app by me, I mean our water operator, monitor on an app to, um, ensure that we have appropriate levels of chlorine at all times in our water system. Um, but we are working to get better communication with the community, especially when we are doing that control flushing, what to do, we're working on an F A Qs to be posted on the website of where we get our water, what causes the smelly water, and what to do for paying bills, or how to make a report, or what other upcoming projects.
Is the, the corator from well here, uh, well one?
Yes.
Is there one of well two?
No, it's on the main master gauge.
And so the water from this well is the only one that's receiving the chlorination at this time?
Both wells are receiving the chlorine, but the analyzer analyzes the entire system, so it's on the, there's a massive pressure gauge out front, and that'll be for both wells. So when the pressure goes down, it triggers. I know that that was big brushers. I'm not very technical with that, but that's how I.
And B, sign life, the water's running fields, who follow the vacancy of the that expired term.
Yes, so there are four applicants to the Board of Zoning Fields, um, that we have had. It's to fill the next fire term that expires on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. We have Barry Slayden. We have Brittany. We have Brittany White.
Brittany White here.
We have Gary Freeman.
Gary Freeman here.
Yes.
And then we also had, um, Lynn Hoda.
Lynn Hoda. So what should we do?
We have this, that information here, there, there are applications or resumes.
The applications are sent to the, at town of Albana, SE.
Right.
But they're not in the.
Would you create a ballot for the rest of them?
There's multiple ways that you can do this, you can either, one, each member can nominate. The applicant, so you can either make a motion for to nominate, and put a second, and then vote from each one. If you do the nomination form of something like. I nominate so-and-so, it would be then, um, what do you call the role, you would say who you're voting for.
So you did this?
I'm confused about that, but what did you just say?
But the difference is of how you can appoint, you can either say, I nominate. This appointee, and then you can go down the line of saying, all other council members who they are to appoint. You can have nominations on the floor, and then when you call them, when the mayor, if you call to vote. You would say who you are voting for. Or you can make a formal motion and a second, just like everything else, and then go up on that.
So only one person. That makes math.
I nominate Gary Freeman, because I can see. My second.
Probably move with second, that. We. Normally Gary Freeman. For all the babies, all the babies that I.
I, I.
Isaiah. You live.
You got it.
See.
If the copier is creating online, and he's been signing it, I mean, copier? Yes.
Okay. Be that, one, two, three, four, five, six, second we do. You need an applicant here for the annexation. No, you're not, you're the first. There's your first reading. Second reading. It is a second reading. African subject to that. I got a problem with that. That's my challenge. So, but it's. It's good. Um. We don't know who, who, who. Okay, for now, fourteen, you'll go through this. Approval of the second reading for.
For Robert Allen McMahon. Six, one, five, zero, judge court.
Move for approval.
Matt Howard, I was gonna say.
Yeah, we need to read the full site, I love those, there's just, I'm tired of them.
So.
Now, we don't need the full ordinance, but by time.
By time?
At least we need to read the title.
Annexation for then, one hundred percent petition method. Whereas a proper petition has.
Just, just, just right here.
Oh, thank you so much. Approval of second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven. Annexation ordinance using one hundred percent petition method. Of tax map number six, six, four, zero, 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 four, two, sixty-one, fifty. Is it judge or Jim Court? And it's Robert.
Robert Allen.
Robert Allen, Matt, Matt. Motion for approval.
I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Second.
Probably moving second, that we get the second reading. To the sixty-one, fifty, there, all the things that I.
I, I.
In the process. I challenge these, so I have the cause of you, thank you. All things that I.
I.
Isaiah. Fifteen, approve. By time. Approval of second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash. Annexation ordinance using one hundred percent petition, method of tax map number six, six, four. Dash, zero, 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 four, five, six, one, zero, eight. Jim Court. Name that's for.
Adam and Joan Martinelli.
Motion for approval.
Motion to approve. A second motion.
Probably moving second, that we get second reading. All the things that I. Are pauses. Your focus. Sixteen, approve, approval of second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five. Approval of second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. Annexation ordinance using one hundred percent petition. Method of tax map number six, six, four, zero, 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 one, one. This four, nine, five, come about way. And that's up here, and basically then. Her mom.
And Barry.
First reading, I mean, motion for approval.
Motion to approve. I'll second that motion too.
Probably move on to the next, you get the approval, six, four, nine, I mean, I'm going to ask, all the side.
I.
Causes. Seventeen, approval of second reading ordinance twenty twenty. Approval of. Approval of second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. Annexation ordinance using one hundred percent petition. Method of tax map number six, six, four, zero, 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 eight, three. Sixty-two, thirty-seven, Rutter Lane. William, Hubie James, Janet Delight, and Clayton Maurice, you know. Motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve. I'll second the motion.
Probably move on second, that we get. Second, second reading. For sixty-two, thirty-seven, Runway, all the things that I.
I.
Eighteen, approval of second reading. Approval of second reading of ordinance two, zero, two, five, dash fifteen. And it's using ordinance using one hundred percent petition method. Of tax pack number six, six, four, zero, 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 seven, six, sixty-one, oh, one, Rutter Lane. William B. and Dana R. Bennett. Google sign, approval of second reading for sixty-one, oh, one, brotherly.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Probably move this second, if you get a second reading. All the things that I.
I.
Nineteen, second reading. Obolens twenty sixteen. Approval of second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen. Annexation ordinance using one hundred percent petition method. Of tax map number six, six, four, zero, 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 seven, seven. Fifty-one, oh, five, Rutter Lane. William B. and Dana R. Bennett. That's a little. On pro, uh, you look. Yes, motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve. Second motion.
No, if you move on second, then we approve, all the things that I.
I.
Approval. Was Susan Clarkson, please stand.
Yes, ma'am.
You owe me one thing.
I'm sorry.
You owe me one thing, uh, so you should be, you should practice yourself.
Well, I am very excited, thank the council, thank the rain to read part of them. Okay. I carry.
No, do finishing, I'm doing first reading.
Thank you, ma'am.
Approval of first reading. I was wrong, um, ordinance twenty-five seventeen. Approval of first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen.
It's.
Approval of first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen. Annexation ordinance using one hundred percent petition method. Of tax map number six, six, four, zero, 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 eight, one. Sixty-two, oh, nine, Brother Lane. Susan Elizabeth Cox. We need a standard edition for me. Motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve. The second motion.
Probably move on second. That we get first reading. Seventy-six, two, oh, nine, you are making all the things that I.
I.
Causes. Two of them. You go to item twenty-one.
I make a motion to adjourn. The second.
Probably move on second. Then you get your. All the things that I. That's me, I'm fine, I'm ready.